Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting to order Bella Vista City Council regular meeting February 27, 2023. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Here.
Wasniak.
Here.
Wilms.
Here.
Fowler.
Here.
Hunchell.
Here.
Hughes, absent.
Here.
Hughes here, yes.
First order of business is citizen input session, and I don't have the list. We'll call you up in order. Each person gets three minutes to speak. If you could state your name when you come up. Don Senate, Brittany Lane.
Don Senate, 22 Brittany Lane. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens, I am here this evening to speak in support of Resolution K, or K Resolution, expressing the opinion of the Bella Vista City Council regarding the importance of cities and counties having local control over local governmental affairs opposing Senate Bill 197. Any citizens that are not aware of Senate Bill 197, this is a power grab from the legislature trying to take some of the zoning authority away from cities. I don't think we want to be governed directly by Little Rock. I think our local government does a pretty good job. There are three issues with Senate Bill 197. First, the zoning issue. The second issue is should short-term rentals that are essentially commercial operations, even though they're in homes, be given superior private property rights over those of regular The third issue is, is unrestricted growth of the STR marketplace to the advantage of any community? I think the Senate, Senate Bill 197 is going to set a terrible precedent because it's going to allow special groups, special privileges, and it's going to have a long-term impact on residents. I am not against STRs that are well-managed or a well-managed marketplace. I am, however, very opposed to any business or even residence that doesn't have to operate under regulations that benefit all the citizenry. I encourage any residents that are concerned about Senate Bill 197 to let the members of the House, I think they call it city municipal and city county and municipal committee, hear your voices because so far, they've heard mostly crickets from the citizens, and they want to hear from you. So please speak up. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Bill Powell of Highland Parkway.
Thank you for taking the time to listen for input from the citizens. I have a unique experience. I served on City Council for eight years, held zoning ordinance, and served on the Board of Zoning Appeals, so I kind of know some of the issues and some of the tensions. The zoning, proposed zoning change on Buckstone Street is probably not appropriate for that location. It backs up to private property with residents, and also is in a situation where there's no other commercial property on that street. Were the property going to be building something on Lancaster, probably nobody would object this particular location. Probably will interfere with the peace and the value of the people that live in that neighborhood. I came to Bella Vista retiring. It was not my plan to hold office. It was not my plan to speak before City Council, and nobody begged me to do this, but please seriously consider rejecting the proposal. Also, I think something that would be very appropriate at some time is for the council to say to the citizens, here's how we make our zoning decisions regarding accepting or rejecting a recommendation of staff. It obviously has to be based on logic and reason and consistency in how those decisions are made. You don't want to be in a position of making decisions that are arbitrary and capricious, nor do we really want a citizen uprise. I was here when the Morley Body Shop was going to be installed. It didn't really need zoning change, but there were a whole lot of people that didn't want that in their backyard, but it met the rules. That's what's in there. They seem to follow the rules well. If the zoning change is approved, it probably needs to be with an instruction to staff that they make very clear to whoever the developer is, as they are acting for a building permit, what they can and cannot do, and clearly urge them to respect the dignity of the property around them. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lori Frank of Ida Berry Lane.
Took me a while to figure out how to say it, too. My name is Lori Frank. I'm from 8 Ida Berry Lane. I own an STR, two LTRs, and I'm also a permanent resident. Last week, I and eight others spoke before the Senate Subcommittee for City Council and Local Affairs regarding SB 197. I am here today to correct for the record something that Councilman Wilms said at the working group meeting. He said, and I quote, "There was a lot of putting Bella Vista down by those who spoke. Last I knew, Bella Vista was a place, and not one of us said anything against Bella Vista." We love Bella Vista, and we love being homeowners in Bella Vista, but this type of antagonizing language has been pervasive throughout this long ordeal, sometimes to the point of fabrication. We are tired of being called out as bad actors, outsiders, or people who run party houses. We are accused of ruining neighborhoods, and to the point of almost being thugs who can't attend a meeting with those who oppose STRs without the police being involved. And lastly, we are tired of being referred to as self-serving and greedy. As much as you think we are running a business which the state Supreme Court disagreed with, we are homeowners who offer residents on a short-term basis and who bring in tax revenue. The data we have supplied repeatedly to this group shows the fear is much bigger than reality. I say we are homeowners who happen to own STRs, and we are speaking up for our homeowners' rights. We are using our constitutional rights as citizens of the United States and this state because we believe our rights as homeowners are being restricted. What we pointed out last week in Little Rock was that local control is attempting to subdue our homeowner rights. By your onerous policies, your restrictions, and your fees, our rights are not equal to other homeowners. We ask that you apply policies across the board or not at all. With SB 197, the state is trying to level the playing field. After all, in Arkansas, owning a property right higher than other constitutional sanctions. I know the counter to this argument is our neighbors believe their rights are being restricted, but there are policing powers for those bad guests that are not being utilized, just as there are policies in place for bad long-term renters as well as permanent party residents. Please vote no to sending an opposition letter for SB 197.
Thank you. Tim Augie, I'm not sure I'm pronouncing that right, A-U-G-E, of Park Ridge Drive.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tim Augie, by Park Ridge Drive, and thank you, City Council. I didn't plan on speaking, but here I am. I think there's two entities, and this has to do with the rezoning of the land behind Park Ridge Drive. And the two entities are the people who live there, and the other entity is a corporation who I don't believe has any real interest in Bella Vista other than to sell their land. And I, first of all, would like for you to consider the people first. There are people who live on Park Ridge, who have taken their back porches and screened them in or made sunrooms out of them so they can sit back in their house and look at the trees and the landscape and maybe see a deer or two. If that land is rezoned to commercial, all that opportunity will probably go away for those people who have spent money to view this Vista. There are some people who have medical reasons to want to keep the pristine area the way it is because they can enjoy their decks by going out and sitting there, looking at the trees, maybe see a deer. Maybe if they've already screened in their back porch and have a sunroom, they can go sit there and look out. So consider the people. It's not about money. Cooper can sell that. It's already zoned R1. They maybe have had chances to do it and didn't want to. I don't know. But they want to make money, and the people want to enjoy their life in Bella Vista as it was when they moved in, of peace, a quiet relaxation, camaraderie with friends and neighbors, and they would like to see all that landscape in back of them, the trees kept there, and they'd like it just stay the way it is. So I ask you to vote no on rezoning it. It's already zoned, and they can sell it as an R1 and make money. Thank you.
Thank you. James McGuire of Nottingham Place.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and fellow citizens. My name is James McGuire. I live at 1 Nottingham Place. My wife and I moved here a year ago, and in the basement of our house, which is our third bedroom, we've created a studio. So we are owner-occupied STR that gets its sole business from Airbnb. I'm the fellow who called Mr. Wasniak and Mr. Flynn regarding the insurance requirement on the permit application for STRs. Airbnb, I watched your video, the video of your meeting last week, and I'm here tonight to talk about some details that seem to be missing or some misunderstandings that were expressed. I got the impression that the council members felt that this was not a real insurance policy, and were kind of blowing it off for a number of reasons. I have four articles here that I printed out off the Airbnb website that go into great detail as to what it is, what it covers, what it is not. I spoke with Airbnb today. They do not issue a certificate of insurance. They provide this coverage worldwide through numerous insurance companies to their hosts. One thing that seemed to be downplayed was the exclusions in your meeting last week, and in looking at the exclusions, they're the same things you would see in any other insurance policy. There are exclusions for aircraft, automobile, acts of war, things like that, that are standard in the insurance industry. I spoke with my insurance agent today, and a rider on a homeowner's policy is such a new thing that he couldn't even get me any information on it. But you can be sure that it's going to add a considerable amount of money to my monthly premium on my homeowner's policy. It does not seem fair to have to pay an additional premium for insurance coverage that is already provided for me by Airbnb. And so I'm going to submit these four articles for your review. I don't know whom I'm supposed to give them to. I would also like to comment on the item number 12, your resolution to make a statement in opposition to SB 197. In the meeting that I saw last week, the opinion seemed to be, opinion of this council seemed to be that the state was intruding upon the city's rights to regulate its area. I believe that the complaints that were stimulating this whole process relate to two things. They relate to noise, and they relate to traffic, and you already have regulations governing those two issues. So I think that SB 197 is actually coming out to protect property owners' rights against intrusion from local governments, and I urge the council to vote against it. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug McCash of Clubhouse Drive.
My name is Doug McCash, and I'm here on behalf of the Bella Vista Property Owners Association. Thank you for considering the rezoning of the Country Club, Clubhouse, and the Branchwood Fitness Center. We're asking, the POA is asking that both be rezoned to C1, neighborhood commercial, which matches the current and historical usage of those properties. There was one concern, I think, expressed at the Planning Commission meeting, that the POA might be looking to sell this property or might do so in the future, and I can assure the council members and Mayor Flynn that that is not the intention of the POA. In fact, it would take a vote of 39,000 members to even entertain such an idea, and so highly doubtful that that would take place. So I encourage you to vote for this, and I appreciate your consideration of this rezoning request. Thank you.
Thank you. Kevin Hughes of Highland Parkway.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, council members. I'm here to kind of talk about the rezoning. Lancashire and Buckstone. I drive that every day, even at night. It's a dangerous curve where they're going to want to put commercial property and put something in there. And the other thing that is happening is people are using the Buckstone Road as a cut across, and they go quite quickly, and there's going to be some accidents. I know of one accident on Lancashire that a man lost his life. His car flipped over and it broke his neck. There's a curve there going down and a curve kind of coming back, and you can't get a good view of what's happening. And with all these gravel trucks and semis and different things that are using Lancashire, we need to take a look at it. We don't want anybody to get hurt. And I vote no for putting that to be commercial. I don't want anybody to be in an accident or maimed or whatever, but thank you.
Beverly Phillips of Park Ridge Drive.
Thank you for having me. My name is Beverly Phillips, and I live at 12 Park Ridge Drive. Been there since 2014, and I'm here to speak on the same issue that Kevin was on, the changing from residential 1 to C, well, I guess we decided maybe C1. But I wanted to thank Ms. Hughes, who isn't here tonight, and Mr. Fowler's commitment to walk the property and see our visual concern. However, it doesn't address actual measured property stakes for clear understandable boundaries. I have requested these at both the Planning Committee meeting and the last council meeting, which have not been addressed. I understand that Mr. Hunchell came, which we appreciate today, and walked the property. Thank you. Putting a commercial facility of any type this close to a senior community causes many concerns and genuine insecurity to our homeowners. It is especially disappointing that Cooper Communities, who made Highland Villages a most sought-after community even to this day, will turn their backs on homeowners who invested in them and not finish out the project. Putting homes on the property in question with walking trails would complete the Highland Village legacy. Finally, last meeting, when we were apprised of your decision, a comment was made by the council that it wasn't right for you to prevent Cooper Communities from rezoning to C1, allowing them higher price potential for highway frontage. You will remember, House Number 1, which was Cooper's model home, is located on the corner of Park Ridge and that very same highway frontage. This home would back up directly to the proposed rezoned property. We question your rationale to increase Cooper Community's financial potential while committing our property values to surely decrease. We feel we're entitled to an explanation of the thinking behind this decision as we find it to be biased and grossly unfair. We hope each of you will seriously consider the points that have been made and how you would vote if it were in your backyard. Your decision and responsibility are to the whole community, not one corporation. Therefore, we respectfully ask you to carefully and thoroughly reexamine your decision to rezon this property.
Becky Van Meter on Park Ridge Drive.
I'm Becky Van Meter, and I live at 18 Park Ridge Drive. Sorry. I've been there one year this month, so I'm here also to talk about the rezoning request. Safety and privacy are very important to the residents on Park Ridge Drive. Rezoning the property that is right next to Park Ridge Drive to commercial will certainly put safety and privacy at risk. A commercial entity will create much more traffic in the immediate area, and it will spill over into Park Ridge Drive. The non-existent crime of today could become a thing of the past. You know, when there's extra people zipping around, they're going to come into our area and look around, and we're just not used to that. Additionally, most of our residents walk daily. We have no sidewalks and have to walk on our narrow street, making safety even more important. There's only one entry to our neighborhood. To turn around, nonresidents or anyone, well, residents don't have to, but nonresidents will have to drive the length of the street to make the U-turn at the circle at the very bottom and then turn around and come back, which means they'll be going up and down more than it would be normally. Anyway, we have a speed limit, but the visitors don't seem to obey the speed limit, especially in the delivery trucks that come bearing through there. It's just ridiculous. So all of us walkers have to really pay attention. And again, we've got a very narrow street. It's not a normal street, but we're going to not give up our walking because that helps us be healthy. Should the request to change the zoning be approved, I request that the board work with Cooper and the new owners to minimize any disruption that would come to our community. But I would ask you to not vote for it, but vote against it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Gene Grossclose.
Good evening. My name is Gene Grossclose. I represent Cooper Communities. I would like to kind of begin by saying that some people have maybe portrayed us as a heartless, money-grubbing entity. I would like to point out that we are the developer of this community. We started in 1965, and as a corporation have poured millions and millions of dollars into building golf courses, lakes, recreational facilities, and we've also donated land to the majority of the churches so they could build church homes in Bella Vista, as well as the library, as well as various other nonprofit organizations. So we are a community builder, and we're proud of the community that we built. We don't want to harm the community that we've established. And I know that many people don't want things in their backyard. I understand that. I get that. But this is a piece of property that fronts a state highway a few hundred yards away from other commercial developments. All we're asking for is the ability to develop it, not develop it, but zone it as commercial. Some of the confusion has been, this is an application for development or construction of a specific facility, and consequences as far as streets and roads, noise, lights, all those things will be addressed when the property is developed. This is not a development application. This is a rezoning application. These neighbors will have an opportunity to address all those concerns when a developer is established and they go through the Planning Commission, which is the appropriate way that development will take place for that particular property. So I want to thank you for your time. I would also like to urge you to waive second reading and make this third and final reading and have the final vote on this issue tonight. Thanks very much.
Thank you. That concludes the citizen input. This is now time for council member reply, if anyone would like to talk about any of Okay. I take it not. Next item on the agenda is the minutes. You have in your pack at the minutes for January 23 regular meeting. Is there any discussion or a motion to approve?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hunchell.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wanda, I neglected to mention that was a motion by Fowler and a second by Hunchell.
Right. Thank you.
Okay. The other minutes are the special meeting that was held on February 1. Is there any commentary or a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. Second.
That's a motion by Wilms, second by Doug Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler. Councilmember Fowler?
Yes.
Wilms?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Honsel?
Yes.
Thank you. As far as financial reports, the year-end financials are not ready at this time, so we'll move along on the agenda. Unfinished business is an ordinance.
Mayor, first would be to entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
Oh, thank you. Yeah. Is there a motion to suspend the rules and of order and procedure to allow all ordinances on the agenda to be read by title only?
Don't move.
I got Fowler on that and second by Wilms. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilms?
Yes.
Fowler?
Yes.
Snow?
Yes.
Wasniak?
Yes.
Honsel, sorry.
That's okay. Yes.
Okay. Thank you. Next is unfinished business ordinance, amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2022-46586, county parcel number 16-40234-001, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. And the staff has requested, going to third and final.
Mayor, you just, that was the second reading just for-
Yeah.
That was the second reading.
Yeah. Okay.
Well, before we do, I mean, we're going to talk about this right-
Sure. Yeah.
Guess I'm first, maybe the only, I don't know. So, I mean, I heard everything that everybody said. I mean, obviously, I really did. And I understand, you know, the concerns. I don't know, I want to attempt a little bit to maybe allay some people's, you know, fears, if you will, I think, what some people are experiencing. But I want to take a step back a little bit, okay? And just talk a little bit about how I have to go through the process of determining whether to support a rezon or not. And I don't want to go into a lot of detail, but it's more than just, you know, somebody might be in my backyard and there might be noise. There's, is there a potential benefit to the community, for instance, to rezon a property like this as a C1? And I want to remind people, it actually started out as a C2, which had an extensive list of permitted uses, okay? That list was greatly reduced and the owner, you know, because we asked him the question, would you consider doing this? And they agreed. They agreed to roll it back to that. So, it really trimmed the list down a lot. So, that was kind of like one step. Another step is taking a look at the comprehensive plan 2040 that was just completed, I don't know, a couple of years ago now. And that area was actually tagged as an area for future commercial development. Didn't say C1, C2, it's just future commercial, okay? And we're talking neighborhood commercial. And when you look at the greater kind of area around there, you go up to 279 and 340 on that corner, you know, you already have two C-stores, you have two banks, you have auto body, you have a post office, you have a myriad of things. You have a fire station up there, which I would say that probably a lot of people are really glad it's there and it's as close to your property as it is, in case something happens. And just to let you know, even another step back farther than that, well, okay, I want to say, I knew I was going to kind of jump around here a little bit. I did come out to the property. I'm sure most of you, or I assume most of you, know that I did. Oscar Hanson contacted me because I said I wouldn't meet with anyone or take any phone calls, and I wanted to be good on my word. And he called and said, could you meet us out on the property and let's walk it with you? You can take us through everything and all the decision-making that you have to make. What's your process? So, I met Oscar, I met Larry from number one, Tim from number five, and Mark from number seven. It was a pretty chilly day, too, Saturday afternoon a week ago. And I kind of took them through, first of all, some of the issues we have just with zoning in Bella Vista period, all the way back to the day when we were first incorporated. You know, whoever did it, and I don't want to be critical of who did it at all, because I wasn't there, I don't know the pressure, the parameters they were under, I don't know how everybody worked with everybody, and that could be the original developer, that could be the city, it could be the POA, I don't know. But a lot of properties were not zoned correctly. And just A, for instance, and we're actually, there are two others on the agenda tonight as well, up on the corner, like Casey's currently, right now, it's zoned as R1. Obviously, it is not R1, right? And we have parking lots zoned as P1. We have parking lots zoned as R1. So, the planning department, right now, is going through an exercise of trying to get, you know, all these mistakes corrected. I have to ask myself, I know it's R1 right now, but if everybody kind of sat down together from the very beginning, that property very well already could have been zoned as commercial. It just wasn't. But be it as made, it is what it is right now, as of today, okay? So, that happened, comprehensive plan 2040. And I'm going to have Taylor, our senior planner, come up in just a minute, because I want her to talk a little bit about the process that the attorney for Cooper Properties mentioned just a minute ago, and that is that whole planning process, in case somebody what does want to develop that property, how the planning department looks at it, and the requirements that they have to go through. But when we went out and walked the property, kind of took them through everything, we walked down the side, you know, on the Lancashire side, and we identified the stake. I actually walked it off to be sure that that was a correct stake. And then we walked back into the property, kind of following that ravine, because a property line kind of follows it around, right? And as the five of us were standing there walking and looking, there is a really nice buffer there. I know it's the winter time, the trees don't have leaves, and, you know, they're not all green and out like they would be in the summertime, but we experience that all over Bella Vista, no matter where you live. I mean, I have, you know, people live right across the ravine from me. I can't see them in the summer, but I can certainly see them now and hear them, by the way. So, as we're looking at it, it's like, wow, you know, that's a pretty good distance. There's really a nice buffer here. And there's actually another like 20-foot easement, you know, that's built into that as well. So, whenever the four gentlemen that I was with looked at that, they think, yeah, well, it actually is a pretty good buffer. And it's reluctant, I know that. These are their properties and I understand, you know, how they feel about it. But one part that I've left out so far that I want to, I do want to address is how the planning department addresses development, particularly from, I believe it's an R2, R3, C1, C2, et cetera, and what's required in additional buffering of those zones. Taylor, can you come up for a minute, please? Okay. So, what's the process? What additional would be required? What are the things that you take into consideration whenever the development of this property, if, in fact, it even takes place? That's another thing. We don't even know if it ever will, right? The property, I'm going to take Jean's word for it, has not sold, okay? They just want to rezon it just for potential future use. Okay.
So, just generally speaking, in the city limits of Bella Vista, and even in our planning area, anything that is not a single-family home or duplex has to go through a planning review, full-scale or large-scale planning review with the planning department and our planning commission. So, the planning department, so the planners that you have on staff help get that development ready, code compliant, ready for review of our planning commissioners, where the planning commission ultimately approves or denies large scales or anything other than a single-family home or duplex here in Bella Vista. Some certain parameters that you were talking about, that they have to oblige by, is that all large-scale developments have to have landscape buffering and perimeters. So, that means so many shrubs and trees, shade trees and ornamental trees on the front, which is an increased amount, but on the sides and rears, they have to have so many one for every 50 feet on the sides and rears. I think I calculated, this is like 366 feet. I believe there'd be 14-ish additional trees that would have to be required and the 10-foot landscape strip on the sides, in addition to the buffering that's already existing there, there to the east. But, sorry. Oh, okay. Wouldn't trip while I was speaking. There are other requirements they have to meet with drainage. They have to keep the drainage on site. They can't increase the post-development flow, so whether that means they put in a detention pond or however the engineer that would be assigned to this would propose to us that meets our drainage criteria. They have to meet bulk and height and size requirements. If this was rezoned as a C1, the height requirements are similar to what it already is, so it's already R1, so it's maxed to 40 feet tall. The structures can't be taller than 40 feet. C1's the same, so the structure would be limited to 40 feet tall if this were to pass and someone were to come down the road and develop it. I mean, I'm more than happy to answer questions. Just so I could talk forever about the large-scale process.
Well, even like things like odors and smells and, you know, there's a lot of, right, additional.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's one of the things that we make sure, that's like one of our basic large-scale requirements. Will there be emissions, nuisances, smells, lights, things like that, that could be nuisances to surrounding development, including, especially residential properties? But drainage, adequate utilities, and nuisances, things like that, those are all just basic large-scale criteria that planning staff and the planning commissioners have to consider during the large-scale process.
Okay. I think that's, I just wanted to take everybody through that. I just wanted people to understand that a developer just can't come in and wipe out all the trees and just build whatever they want and neglect, you know, the fact that there is like residential zoned around and they have to be cognizant of that and their planning department manages all of that, you know, for your protection, so.
The planning review is typically a minimum of 42 days, and that's if they have everything ready to go, but our last few large scales that have came through have been going through the large-scale process since November and December. So, I mean, it is quite the process. It's not like it just gets rezoned and then they get building permits, you know, within the next few weeks. The planning process itself is very rigorous. Our development code is not easy to navigate, so.
We get complaints on it, right? Because people think it's too strict and developers.
We do. We get quite a few of those. We do.
Okay.
Sure.
All right. Are you taking questions?
Is there sewer anywhere near there?
Yes. Village wastewater confirmed for me that there is sewer in that area.
And they will run it over if something happens in there?
Well, that would be up during the development process. They have to work with Village wastewater to make sure that the utility lines that they run and construct meet their requirements. So, that would be done through the large scale.
What about the street improvement on Buckstone? I'm assuming that that would require some expansion to address traffic increases for any commercial business.
Only as part of the development, but not as part of the zone.
No, no, as a part of the development. I'm talking about the reviews that Ms. Robertson is talking about, that the planning commission does for standards. I'm assuming that some of those standards would relate to street improvements and traffic movement relating to it.
Traffic count is, yeah, traffic count is normally, we can request that at any time, one of the large scales that we have, to like analyze that a little bit more, but without looking at a survey of the existing road and the classification, I can't, you know, I don't want to guarantee on the record if that would require, because Buckstone, I believe, is a residential street, which is one of the lowest classifications and lowest construction standards that we have. But, yeah, traffic and things like that, that is also one of the initial items that we review during large scales, making sure that peak hour is able to meet the requirements of the area. And the planning commission has the authority to require more when it comes to traffic studies and items like that.
So, if Buckstone is classed as a residential street today because of the zoning that's in there, and it becomes zoned as a commercial property, then will the street classification change and will that require additional performance standards for construction or to service that commercial property?
That would take a resolution, so that could be done in the direction of the planning commission if it was found that it needed to be increased, and then, of course, that would increase the construction standard requirements for Buckstone. But C1 typically does not require access to a major, minor, or collector. There is no standards for the C1, so it's pretty typical that C1 can be found on a residential street, because it is intended for neighborhoods. Typically, you'll see C2 is where it starts saying, okay, now the zoning needs to be required on a major arterial or minor arterial.
So, just one last question, like for me. We talked about access to the property. You know, there's access, more than likely would be Buckstone. I couldn't get a team that, but if they did, if they would like to, whoever, if it would unfold, would want to access from Lancashire, then now that's a whole different conversation. They would have to work with the RDOT in order to get that done.
Yeah. Any access or street cut onto 340 or 279 or 71 requires approval from RDOT as well as the city. And also, it is a major arterial, so it has certain intersection requirements, so it would have to be over 250 feet away from that intersection. Of course, that would put it near in that ravine area. So, I mean, there's multiple things that we would look at like that during the large scale. But, yeah, they would need to get all of their items in a row with RDOT before they could even really submit. We require that upfront to make sure that RDOT is okay with any access onto their right-of-way, so.
Okay. That's all I have, unless somebody else has something else. But I really appreciate it.
Thank you, Taylor. Appreciate your help.
So, just at least for me, and hopefully I'm answering, if anybody on the council has any questions, we're kind of answering some of those as we go here. Very sincerely, whenever it comes to a rezon like this, and, you know, we've heard Cooper a lot, whatever, I really disconnect myself from that. I have to. It doesn't matter to me, and that is part of the process legally, to me, I have to take a look at the all-encompassing everything, all-in, and does this make sense, does it not? Will it benefit the residents of Bella Vista, et cetera? And my hope would be for this property, that if something will go in there, because you see things like, I believe, doctors' offices, rehabilitation, education, you know, some things like that, that whatever would go in there would be for the benefit of the residents out on the west side, because right now, you know, residents, in terms of some of those things, you've got to go all, you know, into 71 or you have to go into Bentonville. And my hope would be, whatever goes in there would benefit the residents of Park Ridge and then the other, you know, development on the east side of you. And I, and by the way, before, one last thing, I just want you to know, I did support taking the roads public, by the way, a couple of years ago. So, I got a feather in my cap for that. I hope somebody remembers that. But I was very honest with the gentleman that afternoon, all four of them, that I would have a very difficult time not approving this. So, I mean, I didn't, you know, try to hedge or anything like that. I was very honest. I tried to take them through everything. And when we got through with our walk and all the talk-through, I mean, as I said, I know there's going to be some reluctance there, but I believe they understood. So, that's all I have.
Anyone else want to add anything? Larry?
I guess I would like to say that a number of years ago, a municipal, not a municipal, a private corporation was looking for property and they were considering that property as a site for their development, acquiring it from Cooper. So, I've walked it, not recently, but a long time ago, and see that there is a large ravine that goes in there that flows to the north, I believe, slopes to the north. And development would provide, would require some screening for the residential properties to separate them. Some of it was discussed by Planner Robertson in her presentation. There are other things that would apply to development on that site. I guess when I look at a rezoning, I look at it as, what is the merit of the rezoning? Where does it fit in our land use, comprehensive land use plan? Is it compatible with the land use plan that we've adopted or is it not? And in this case, our planners tell us that it is compatible with the comprehensive plan that we've adopted. Now, that may not be popular, but that's reality, and that was viewed, and we had a committee of, I think, 13 people or 14 people in the community representing and working with the comprehensive planner folks and our planning department in developing that plan. And so, it is a peripheral area, so the development there will be less intense than it might be in the area bounded by Rogers Road, 279 and 340. That's where Highlands Plaza is located. That's where the cottages are located. That's where Brookside Rehab Facility is located. So, it would be a- So it would be a compatible use in the C1 area, much reduced from what C2 allows. There is screening that can be required as part of that plan development, and so it's difficult to say, no, you can't do it. I don't look at who the owner is. That's not important, because every property owner has a right to come in and ask for a land use change on his property. It may not be suitable, in which case we would likely turn it down. If it is appropriate and reasonable, we can turn it down and go to court and argue it out with the judge, likely losing if we don't have very solid ground to turn it down. And I know that's not popular, but those are the facts that property owners do have rights to, so.
Okay. Anybody want to make a motion to move to third and final?
I'll make a motion, move to third and final.
I'll do a second.
That was Fowler and Wilmes.
Suspend the rules, you got a third and final.
Yeah, so we'll have to vote on that. I just, I'm going to third and final. Roll call.
Yes. Councilmember Snow.
No.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
No.
Five, six, two, three.
Okay, so it'll be on for next month.
Third reading next month.
Yep. Okay, on to new business. Number B, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to enact a new section 2-311 donations to provide budgeting and appropriation of donated and bequested funds for the budget year in which funding is received. So I think we discussed this at the work session. You know, the point of it is for small donations often come up to departments that they can, it'd be automatically added to the budget in, in that same year, and they can go ahead and, and spend it, so. Any questions about that?
I would make a motion to approve.
This is ordinance, so we need a third and final reading.
Oh, sorry.
I would move to, move it to third and final reading.
Second.
So that was Wilmes and Fowler.
Suspend the rules, you got a third and final reading. Councilman Hansel.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Okay, so, I'll read it. Amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to enact a new section 2-311 donations to provide budgeting and appropriation of donated and bequested funds for the budget year in which funding is received.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
That was Fowler and Wasniak.
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Okay, that was approved. Okay, item C, amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47148, county parcel number 16-70219-000, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District. Staff request third and final reading.
Unless somebody said something, say, I'm like, make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
That was Fowler and Wasniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Okay, I'll read it for the third time. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47148, county parcel number 16-70219-000, from P1 Conservation District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Wilmes and Wasniak.
Yes.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Okay, item D, amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47153, county parcel number 16-17991-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District, and the staff request third and final reading.
So moved.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules and move to third and final.
Second.
You haven't recognized anybody, Mayor, they're all just talking.
Yeah, okay. Well, that was Fowler and, Fowler and Hansel, so, okay.
Suspend the rules and go to third and final.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilmes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Okay, I'll read it for the third time. Amending the Bella Vista zoning ordinance and map to rezon property described in rezoning petition number 2022-47153, county parcel number 16-17991-000, from R1 Residential Single Family District to C1 Neighborhood Commercial District.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Wasniak and Wilmes.
Yeah.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilmes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Okay, our next one is ordinance E, amending section 107-378, permit to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to remove concurrent supplemental requirements for grading and erosion control and building permit applications and replace with a time limit of 180 days and for other purposes, and the staff requests movement to third and final. If you recall, Taylor Robertson gave a little explanation of the reason for this last meeting, but if you want to hear from her again, you can.
I just have a question. Is it urgent that we go to third and final but invoke the emergency clause for this to make it effective sooner? Are 60 days okay?
Talk just a little bit slower.
Little bit slower, okay. Staff is requesting a third and final due to the lack of questions that I received and the small, the small tweak to code that is being proposed and the amount of support that, or I guess the amount of requests that we received for this change and how long that we've been asked to make this change. So the sooner, the better, however.
They're asking you about an emergency clause. It would be effective in the morning.
For public health and safety?
Yeah.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if staff's aware of this being a health concern.
It would be 60 days if we pass it and go to third and final tonight.
There's, there's, you've got a practical concern. In order to adopt an emergency clause, you're going to have to amend the proposal, and so all amendments have to be in writing. We don't have one in writing, so we'd have to stop the meeting, write a clause, and the staff isn't requesting an emergency clause.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't see a need for one or any public health concern. In fact, the 60 days would be allowed, because this is more going to be an internal administration change after this code, so the 60 days would provide us and the contractors time to adjust, and I think they'd appreciate that.
Okay. Move to.
Well, Larry, we can let it ride till next month, and you can bring up what you want to do and shorten it up that way.
No, that's fine. A question for you that came up in reviewing it is what happens, the requirement now would separate the building permit application and the, and the grading and clearing application, correct?
They're already two separate applications. They just have to be.
But it would separate the timing of doing that.
Yes, if they want to.
And so if we defer the building permit application to come up to 180 days after the grading and erosion control, is there any issue with them not following through with the building permit application at that point? In other words, are we going to have complaints of a lot, a lot clearing with no building action following that?
If they let the GEC expire, they would have to return it as closely as possible to the vegetated state before clearing, as code is written right now.
So they would have an obligation to restore it back somehow?
Before we could release that GEC final.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Yep.
But that is a slight risk.
It is a slight risk. I would move to, move to go to a third and final reading on this.
Second.
That was, yeah, that was Wilmes and Fowler, going to third, motion to go to third and final. Yeah. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. I'll read it for the third time now. Amending section 107-378, permit to the Code of Ordinances of the City of Bella Vista to remove concurrent supplemental requirements for grading and erosion control and building permit applications and replace with a time limit of 180 days and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
That was Wasniak and Wilmes. Okay. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Wilmes.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed. Next ordinance is authorizing an agreement with Bank Funding LLC to provide short-term financing under amendment 78 to the Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of a Pierce Senate fire truck, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes. And the staff did request mo, going to third and final, and this one is important to go to third and final because the bid is only good for so long. Did you want to hear from Kim Hall about it? Since she's here.
Everybody, I'm good.
Pardon me?
I'm good.
Okay.
Move to, move to waive the rules and move to third and final reading.
Second.
Suspend the rules.
You're right, that was Wilmes and Wasniak. By the end of the meeting.
There's a reason I'm ticky about that, just trust me, I know I always say that it's just.
By the end of the meeting, we'll get that right, maybe.
End of the year, maybe.
Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Move to, oh, you got to.
Yeah, I'll have to read it a third time. Authorizing an agreement with Bank Funding LLC to provide short-term financing under amendment 78 to the Arkansas Constitution for the acquisition of a Pierce Senate fire truck, declaring an emergency, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Was Wasniak and Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Do we have to have a motion, a second, to approve the emergency clause?
So moved. Second.
Was that Wilmes?
Yeah.
Wilmes and Fowler. This is a roll call vote for approving the emergency clause.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Thank you. Next one's a resolution approving the mayor's reappointment of Daniel Ellis to the Bella Vista Planning Commission for a four-year term expiring March 1, 2027. For the information of the audience, Daniel Ellis is chairman of the planning commission and has been on it for a number of years.
And he does an excellent job, I might add. If anybody's ever attended a planning commission meeting, he really does a nice job, runs a buttoned-up meeting, and he's really solid in his knowledge of planning and the whole background of what he's a civil engineer, I believe, so he, he has a really nice background.
Very true.
Move to approve.
Second.
That was Wilmes and Fowler. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
That's approved. Moving on, next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a contract with Jackson Brown Palcolic Architects, Inc., for architectural services related to the renovation of the central fire station, number one. I think it might be appropriate, Chief, if you want to say a few words about it.
What's your, did I got any questions on it? It's this architect for the remodel of Central Fire Station, the two-story building that's currently the police department.
Yep.
We're looking at renovating into fire living for the fire personnel at Station One, Central Fire Station, and that's the architect. That's the second step to, from the construction manager, architect is the next step to get that process relevant so we can get bidable plans to see what the project's going to cost.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
That was Fowler and Wasniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Snow.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Okay, motion passed, very good. Our next one's a resolution approving the mayor's reappointment of Gail Cleason to the Bella Vista Planning Commission for a four-year term. This is another person whose term was expiring and is willing to continue on for another term.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Was that?
Craig.
Craig Hansel and Wasniak. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Hansel.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Resolution was approved. Next resolution, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into a guaranteed maximum price amendment for project remainder to the contract with Clennard Construction Management, Inc., for construction management services related to the construction of a fire training facility in the amount of $5,84,751.58, and this is for the contract with Clennard Construction, and that's the estimated amount for the entire project.
Isn't that, isn't this a not to exceed?
Yeah.
This is a maximum. So. It's for the fire training facilities, I recall.
Correct, yeah.
Motion to approve.
Second.
It's Wasniak and Wilmes. Roll call vote.
Councilmember Fowler.
Yes.
Hansel.
Yes.
Wasniak.
Yes.
Wilmes.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Approved, five zero. Next one's a resolution expressing the opinion of the Bella Vista City Council regarding the importance of cities and counties having local control over local governmental affairs, the importance of cities and counties having local control over local governmental affairs, opposing Senate Bill 197, and for other purposes. So any discussion?
Yeah, I absolutely support the resolution. I think we need to make our voices heard. We went through, to say, a lengthy process to get this, uh, ordinance passed, you know, is selling it short. I don't know, I mean, I personally worked over a year and a half on it. We are the ones that listen to the residents and their feedback, their concerns, at least for us here locally. This ordinance did not begin with me or the planning department, it actually began with our residents. And, you know, again, the phone calls and emails and whatever form of communication that they decided to take. I read a quote in the Arkansas Democrat, and this was Roger Rogers' mayor, Greg Hines, and he said, "It is my concern with continued interference with local control by centralized group of legislatures. If 135 people in Little Rock can manage all this, then let's just abolish the cities." So we have our role locally, and I think we follow that, and I think that it is, you know, our responsibility, not, not somewhere else, like down in Little Rock with, I said, just 135 people. So that's my, that's my opinion.
Jerry?
Yes, sir. I would like to ask my friend and fellow council member, Mr. Wilms, to remove, request that this resolution be removed as it serves no purpose other than to just further establish the arrogance of this council. This legislation is in response to this council's inability to pass a reasonable and constitutionally accepted ordinance. It's already passed the Senate with a large majority and projected to pass the House by an equal majority. It, the municipal league does not want to aggressively oppose this ordinance or this legislation. They vowed to just basically back off from it. The litigation that we have filed against us, I, the municipal league does not apparently want to assist in that litigation, so I would just further remind my fellow council members that we very well may need the assistance of this state delegation sometime in the future.
I do have a reply to that. It's absolutely untrue that the Arkansas Municipal League does not support local control of our city's business affairs. We were just at Arkansas Municipal League meeting, what, a month ago, and that was a huge part of the conversation, was making sure that our cities maintain local control, not just in this regard, but in many regards, you know, making elections partisan. I could go on really forever with the conversations that we were having down there, so.
Just one thing I can address on the legal, on the lawsuit side of it, this doesn't fall under our coverage for municipal league legal defense program. They've not been requested to assist in this, it's being handled by me because it's my job to handle it, and it's not a part of our coverage, so they have not in any way denied assisting us, they haven't ever been asked to assist us, so just want to make that clear.
I just wanted to make an observation, not so much having to do with SDRs, but just in general, I guess it has to do with the SDRs a little bit. You know, there's, some people were very passionate on the pro-SDR side, and some people were very passionate on the other side, and I've encountered a number of people in the last week or so who aren't either one and are completely astounded that the, what the legislature's doing, and even asked if it was, if it was legal. It's so astounding that ordinary people can't even believe that they're doing it, so that's just my observation.
I guess the reality in part is that many of the STR property owners and managers are not in opposition to this proposed legislation in Belavista. They don't, they may not agree 100% with it, but many of them that I have spoken with and have gotten voice messages from, support, support the action that we've taken, do not find it to be overwhelming or controlling or regulating beyond what we reasonably might expect for a business operating in a residential neighborhood. All home businesses in most codes, many of the codes that I'm familiar with requires conditional use permits if you're operating an in-home business. In essence, the in-home business is really operated by the resident in the property. It's not, doesn't allow outside employees to be brought in. You might be able to get an approval for that, but the codes normally do not permit that to be the case. What is being requested here by the state regulation, it says it's okay to operate a business absent, in absentia, in a residential neighborhood without any control of the people who own the property. They're not on-site in most cases, there are exceptions to that where you have an owner occupied rental, but in other cases, it's not owner occupied, and you have strangers coming in there without any supervision from the owner of the property. Some folks who own properties have taken the initiative to put in some regulations in the rental provisions to screen the applicants who come in. That's not true, apparently, in all cases, and in some cases, the tendency has been, in my humble view, to maximize the profit return of that rental property, maximize the amount of people who stay there, and maximize the amount of time that is rented. Both of those have created, from what I've been able to learn and understand from neighbors who've complained, are the generation of the problems, and where the complaints come, the whole purpose of this ordinance is to address those types of complaints or have a better vehicle to address them. We have another issue which is not unique, which is, is unique to Belavista but not unique to other communities, and that is, we don't have a public sewer system serving all of these properties. We have septic systems, which compounds the problem. There have been many people who have written articles about it, there are certainly different, differing views, but the reality is, is that Belavista lots, the 38,000-plus that have been created in Belavista by the developer are too small to accommodate a primary and a secondary drainage field. That in itself is an issue. The soils in Belavista are not primo for onsite disposal, while many of them are acceptable, some are marginal, and some are not allowable, which means that they have to have sewer service, and we do have some sewer service. To my understanding, about 3,500 properties are served. So I, in deference to Mr. Snow, Councilman Snow, I would not be inclined to want to withdraw the motion, the resolution.
I just want to make one more comment, I'll make it really quickly. You know, I know that there is probably a perception that I'm hostile to short-term rentals. I'm not, never have been.
No.
The conversation started with residents to me, then I addressed it with our CDS department, saying, man, I'm getting, I'm getting a lot of phone calls, you know, about short-term rentals and complaints. CDS, Doug can, Doug will vouch for me on this, he said, we're getting complaints as well, and then he took me into some other areas other than just, you know, probably over occupancy, noise, trash, what have you, whatever it might be. I was concerned, and after I had a conversation with Doug, I went to Mayor Christie and I said, you know, Mayor, we have, we have a brewing issue here, it's starting to bubble to the surface, and if we don't wrap our arms around it and put some controls in, it's going to, I think, jeopardize, you know, a business aspect of Belavista, and we really, you know, need to move forward and try to get a handle on it before it jeopardizes it. That's where it all started, and that was the conversation. So just having said that, I'm not going through all the conversations of the last, you know, shoot, started all, what, the first ordinance proposal was in June, you know, here we are in February. Right now, this resolution is simply a message, at least as far as I'm concerned, to tell or to let the legislatures in Arkansas know that we can manage our own business here locally. It's a local issue, so that's what this resolution is about, and I'd like to make a motion to approve.
Second.
Who is that on the second? Fowler and Wilms. Roll call vote?
Councilmember Snow.
No.
Hansel.
Yes.
Fowler.
Yes.
Wozniak.
Yes.
Wilms.
Yes.
Carried four to one. Announcements, the next city council.
Mayor, before you get into that, you know, I've been here awful long time, and we got to this point strictly because with the SDRs, we didn't enforce what's on the books. Had we enforced what's on the books from when the complaints started coming in, we may not be here today, and we never have to any extent, and because of that, it got a little bit blown up, and then a lot blown up, and then a whole lot more blown up after that, and we ended up here. Had we maybe done the right thing or tried to do the right thing early on, we wouldn't be here today because we had stuff to cover this, and we knew who the people were, who were the largest violators, but we never tried, and, you know, that's, that's on us up here, and a handful of citizens who were never called to tell us what was going on till after the fact, and I've thought that since the very beginning. Thank you.
Okay, announcements, the next city, next city council work session is 5:30 PM, Monday, March 20, Belavista District Court. Next city council regular meeting is 6:30 PM, Monday, March 27, at Belavista District Court. Planning Commission work session, 4:30 PM, Thursday, March 2, at Belavista District Court. Planning Commission regular meeting, 4:30 PM, Monday, March 13, at Belavista District Court. And Board of Construction Appeals, 3 PM, Tuesday, March 14, if necessary, at Belavista District Court. And before we all take off, I'd like to ask the police chief, if he's still awake, what do we mean by Belavista District Court? Is it here or is it at the new public safety building? Okay, and that's starting at what date?
In March, so all those dates in March.
Even March 2?
No.
Oh, okay, that's why I wondered, one of them was going up pretty quick, so. But once we get to the middle of March, you're anticipating it'll be in the new, the new courtroom, okay? So just wanted to make that clear for folks so they know where to show up, so. Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.